We call the meeting to order. I ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Eric.
Alderman Reitzel?
Present.
Alderman Logan?
Present.
Alderman Snow?
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Present.
Alderman Shuneman?
Present.
Alderman Kleckler?
Present.
Alderman Folsom?
Present.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Present.
President, you have a call.
Thank you. First order of business of the council this evening is some presentations, and the first will be, I will call Mr. Ted Padilla, our Water Superintendent, up to the microphone for the awarding of this year's Water Electric Scholarship.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. Tonight, it's always a pleasure to come up here after we've completed our groundwater/electrical safety education program that we've had in place for probably approximately 10 years or so now. And I believe if you have anything in your packet that gives you a breakdown pretty much of the schools that we went to and how many students participated. So, we average about the same amount of students every year, so if you take that times 10, or how many years we actually started, it's quite a bit of students that have been able to participate in this and, you know, get something out of it. We're very few municipalities that actually do this. So, you know, we've been to the PowerPoint, and you see now on Facebook, if you looked at the City Rock Falls Facebook, we take pictures of each class and the students that are involved in testing of nitrate, handing out door knockers, or not door knockers, but leak detection information, everybody. But, you know, it's, I believe, you know, I believe in it, and it's always a pleasure to go out to the schools and, you know, get involved with the schools, and, you know, it's, I can't say more than enough. It does give us a discount with the water sampling through our SOCs and VOCs that we test for every three years. So, with that, I'd like to bring up Gavin Long. He is the winner of our $1,000 scholarship. So, this will be Gavin here, and I'd like to take a picture. Congratulations. He did pretty well at the scholarship night. He made a lot of money. I believe the total was $960,000 that the kids did this year, so quite a good year. I guess he didn't really want to speak anything on that. So, we'll leave it at that. Another successful year for groundwater and electrical safety, so thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Gavin, congratulations on behalf of the City Council. Good luck to you in your next endeavors. Our next presenter, I would ask Randy Wilber from the Rock Falls American Legion Post, come forward and bring with him his royalty. This year's poppy queen, I'm going to get this right, Hayden Boucher?
Buncher.
Buncher, I knew one of them would be wrong.
Hi, I'd like to present Hayden Buncher. She's the 2016 Poppy Queen for American Legion Post 902, and she's coming in, she's going to walk around and greet each of you, I guess, and try and talk you into a poppy.
If you made it through that side of the room, this is the easy side.
That's the big money side, sweetie.
Jesus.
She's only got one voice.
Oh, yeah.
Is that just me very well?
There you go.
Yeah.
Now, don't smile.
Don't cry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I failed to mention, she's also on Grand Avenue.
Yeah. You hadn't got out the door yet.
All right, our next order of business this evening is a proclamation designating June
18th as Juneteenth Day. Is anyone here from the Y? Okay, let's go ahead and read it into the record then, if you would, please, sir.
Juneteenth Celebration 2016, whereas Juneteenth recognizes the joy of freedom as experienced by enslaved people who learned of the Emancipation Proclamation more than two years after it was signed, and whereas Juneteenth is a holiday established in Texas in 1865 and now celebrated across our nation and recognized as a state holiday for observance in 39 states, and whereas Juneteenth is a day on which we remember and honor the sufferings of slavery and acknowledge its evils and its aftermath, and whereas Juneteenth recognizes the multitude of mayors, of major ways that African-Americans have contributed to the history, growth, and development of the United States, and whereas Juneteenth is a celebration of freedom, unity, and shared vision, a time when all, when people of all races, nationalities, and religions join hands and commit to each other and to share community, and whereas Juneteenth offers an opportunity for everyone to renew our commitment to peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all, and whereas the YWCA of the Sauk Valley is inviting all to celebrate Juneteenth on this June 18th, 2016, at Profford Park in Sterling, Illinois. Therefore, be it resolved that I, William B. Wescott, Mayor of the City of Rock Falls, do hereby proclaim June 18th, 2016, as the date of Juneteenth in the City of Rock Falls, and call upon members of the communities of Rock Falls and Sterling to promote and celebrate equality, peace, freedom, and justice, and to participate joyfully in the celebration of Juneteenth past the seventh day of June 2016.
Chair would entertain a motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ms. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Ms. Folsom, to approve the Juneteenth Celebration 2016 proclamation as presented. Any additional questions or comments?
Only one.
Sir?
I've had the privilege of attending the Juneteenth affair, and generally they have some very good programs and food also. The ribs are phenomenal.
Any other comments, questions, or delicacies? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye. Opposed? Proclamation is accepted. Next item on the agenda is audience request, and we're very fortunate this evening to have with us Mr. Ted Havar to speak on behalf of the hotel group. Neil, who we're all familiar with, was going to be here, but unfortunately, his mother has suffered a stroke, and he is with her. So, Ted, thank you for filling in this evening and bringing us up to date on the hotel project.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Once again, my name is Ted Havar, with Rock Falls Hotel Group. I'm one of the owners of the hotel, along with being the general contractor that finished the project. We've been open now for approximately 30 days, as of yesterday. I want to let you know that things are going very well. We are open, that's first point. We had a public open house approximately two weeks ago. We had 375 people visit and walk through the property. I know that we did have a slight open house for the mayor and the council members. I'm not sure how many of you were able to attend. Some of your faces are familiar to me, some of you are not. I hope to meet each one of you individually at some time. We, as you can see, the grass is now growing at the property. I was by there today, I was very happy to see that. We do have all of the landscaping completed on the south side of the building. We're looking forward to completing the landscaping on the north side of the building. Hopefully, our intentions were to have it sometime in July. We're waiting to see what the elevation of the bike path will be to be able to blend our two properties together. Let me see here, I've got some notes that will be with me for a moment. Customer feedback on the property has been very positive. I'm not sure if we've heard of any complete negatives that I've seen so far, so everything is positive about it. Let's see here. As being one of the equity investors on the project, I want to point out that the reason why we did invest in this project is concerning about the green space that the Rock Falls has along the river here. We placed this property on the river, obviously, because that was the property that was available. We're looking forward to being able to draw off of public events that will be done in the area. Obviously, that really has to do with the green space to the east of the property, excuse me, to the west of the property, along with the bike path around the property so we can be finished. The actual bike path is a crucial part of our appearance to the north side of the property. We actually put a breakfast patio off the backside encompassing that, encompassing that area. In the future, as the project, I'm sorry, it's been a while since I spoke in front of people, so bear with me for a moment. As our community grows here, we look to grow our business with the City of Rock Falls, hence the reason why we made our private equity investment in the hotel. I do want to thank the council members and the city employees for your patience while we put this together. Fact of the matter is, the end result is the most important part. You're going to forget about the journey well beyond the end result. So, thank you for your time this evening. We look forward to a long prosperous career and business ventures with the City of Rock Falls.
Thank you, Ted. Any questions? Come back and visit us all the time, Guy.
I live in Dixon, Illinois, so I would be one of the most, one of the local investors here.
Thank you for being here, Ted. We appreciate it very much. And if you speak with Neil before I do, please give him continued care and concern for his mom, and hope things work out well there.
Hope so, too.
Next item is Community Affairs. I noticed the chamber is not represented here this evening. Ms. Blacker, was anything passed on to you, other than the obvious June 25th and June 26th activities?
No. Oh, Janelle, I thought she was coming up to date for podium. No, I don't have anything for the chamber tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Does any of the members of the council have any items that are on the consent agenda to be removed for consideration separately before we act on that? Hearing none, Chair, or please read the Consent Agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the May 17th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the bills as presented. An approval of the RBNW District Use Application for Summer Splash.
Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda as presented. I'll make that motion. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman. Accept Consent Agenda as presented.
Can you turn that on?
Questions?
I have one thing that needs to be changed that was given to the aldermen in their packet, the parking, just to show them briefly. We gave them a layout of the parking, or the venue, how it's going to be between the Bass Pro Shops and the river, the splash that they turned in with their application. Janelle and Bethany worked together today and have it revised, so we're going to be able to use that entire south part off the patio area there for public parking, along with the handicap parking. We're going to move them over into the grass area and then the concrete area. They'll be right next to the Bass Pro Shop stage, like the NASCAR venue will be close to that. So, I think everybody's happy with the layout, Janelle, correct? So, just wanted to let you know it's a little bit different than in your packet.
Thank you. Motion's been made, the second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances for first reading. This evening, we have one ordinance for first reading only, if you would, sir.
Approval of Ordinance 2016-2258, amending Section 16-387, restrictions on issuance for liquor licenses, adding Section 16-387.1, Basset Training Required.
Chair would entertain a motion? So moved. Mr. Reitzel?
Second.
Mr. Shuneman? Motion by Ms. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Shuneman, and let the record reflect that Mr. Snow would accuse himself from this particular vote. Any questions? This comes about as a result of a change in the state statute. The state last year, along with issues relating to happy hour and a few other things, are going to make mandatory Basset Training for all on-premises, which is your bars and whatnot, any place where people will sit down and drink while they're there. They did not carry that out, they in fact withdrew the part for off-premises. However, the City of Rock Falls, like all municipalities, has the ability to enforce code to a higher degree than the state law, just not less. And it's the purpose of the Basset Training for on-premises is important as well for off-premises as well, and especially with our tobacco checks and our alcohol checks and stuff that we have every year. Everyone in the state did not get this all at one time. This came about, that Chicago has had this in place, Cook County, for a long time. Because of the need for people to get Basset Training either on or off-premises, the state was divided up by the State Liquor Commission, and Whiteside County area, where we're at out here, is not required to have the Basset Training for institutions in place until July 1st of 2017. And so, we will be getting appropriate notices out to our liquor license holders and stuff, so there's plenty of time. Many of them have already taken the opportunity to get this. That's what this ordinance would be doing, is adopting, because it's going to be more stringent than the state statute. Any questions? Hearing none. This is first reading only. All those in favor of the first reading of Ordinance 2016-2258 as presented, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordnance for second reading adoption, two separate ordinances this evening?
First one's adoption of Ordinance 2016-2255, adding Section 5.5 to Chapter 16, regulating pawnbrokers.
Chair would entertain a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shuneman, seconded by Ms. Logan, for the adoption, second reading and adoption of Ordinance 2016-2255. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Next gentleman. Ms. Blacker?
Your Honor, first, I have approval of work to be done for a window to be installed in the customer service office by Terry Wolf Construction, 30125, Film Road, Rock Falls, in the amount of $5,878. This is a 84 by 38-inch window that will go between Superintendent Hatfield's office and the main part of the utility office. It will be one-way glass, one-way view, whatever you call that, for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Snow and seconded by Ms. Logan, for the approval of the estimate for a window to be installed in the customer service office by Terry Wolf Construction in an amount of $58,000, excuse me, $5,878. Questions? Your Honor, this is something I wish would have come to our Public Property Committee so we could, you know, fully evaluate the type of thing. It kind of puts us on short notice on trying to decide something on this in the last couple of days. Questions you have about a window, sir? Well, I don't even know if it opens, or if it's a left-handed window or a right-handed window. It's a window that has one-way view into the office supervisor. Can you fill the office? Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Seven aye.
Next, Your Honor, we have approval of a low bid, low bid from O'Brien Civil Works of Polo, Illinois, for the 2016 through 2019 crack filling program at 37 cents per linear foot. Just as a side note to that, Your Honor, we've been budgeting 50, we decided this year to start budgeting $50,000 a year for crack filling. That gives us slightly over 135,000 linear feet that we'll be able to do crack fill on, which, as you guys know, it's really important that we get First Avenue done and try to maintain that road, and this low bid should help us get a lot of First Avenue done this year.
I make a motion for the approval of the bid from O'Brien Civil Works from Polo for the 16-2019 crack filling program. 37 cents linear foot. Yeah, 35, 37 cents linear foot, yeah. Second, Mr. Kuhlmeier? Posted by Ms. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier, approved of the bid from Brian Civil Works. This is for a three-year crack filling program at 37 cents per linear foot for all three years. Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Ms. Blacker?
Your Honor, first, I have approval of work to be done for a window to be installed in the customer service office by Terry Wolf Construction, 30125, Film Road, Rock Falls, in the amount of $5,878. This is a 84 by 38-inch window that will go between Superintendent Hatfield's office and the main part of the utility office. It will be one-way glass, one-way view, whatever you call that, for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Snow and seconded by Ms. Logan, for the approval of the estimate for a window to be installed in the customer service office by Terry Wolf Construction in an amount of $58,000, excuse me, $5,878. Questions? Your Honor, this is something I wish would have come to our Public Property Committee so we could, you know, fully evaluate the type of thing. It kind of puts us on short notice on trying to decide something on this in the last couple of days. Questions you have about a window, sir? Well, I don't even know if it opens, or if it's a left-handed window or a right-handed window. It's a window that has one-way view into the office supervisor. Can you fill the office? Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Seven aye.
Next, Your Honor, we have approval of a low bid, low bid from O'Brien Civil Works of Polo, Illinois, for the 2016 through 2019 crack filling program at 37 cents per linear foot. Just as a side note to that, Your Honor, we've been budgeting 50, we decided this year to start budgeting $50,000 a year for crack filling. That gives us slightly over 135,000 linear feet that we'll be able to do crack fill on, which, as you guys know, it's really important that we get First Avenue done and try to maintain that road, and this low bid should help us get a lot of First Avenue done this year.
I make a motion for the approval of the bid from O'Brien Civil Works from Polo for the 16-2019 crack filling program. 37 cents linear foot. Yeah, 35, 37 cents linear foot, yeah. Second, Mr. Kuhlmeier? Posted by Ms. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier, approved of the bid from Brian Civil Works. This is for a three-year crack filling program at 37 cents per linear foot for all three years. Questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Second item is approval of Resolution 2016-742, releasing the lien for the so-called "bass" training. I've got Joel Horn, the County Administrator, and Melissa Spangler, my operations manager with me. What, oh, how nice, very nice. Did you guys get this in the packet? Okay, so basically, what we're asking for is a variance to bring the dental clinic out about 18 feet. If you look at your thing, I have a line marked where it will go out. We have about 10 dental suites now, and there's oftentimes when patients are standing. And we need to get that waiting room bigger so people can sit down while they're waiting. So that would expand the waiting room to about 37 chairs. And our other problem is, right here's where I've got six staff, and for HIPAA, you know, concerns where people are talking about their private stuff and you're standing like this and then somebody else is standing like this and you're talking, we want to spread that out so people have more privacy where they can talk to the receptionist. It, and then here's this picture, the other side of the building over the old dairy, the wick side comes all the way out to almost the sidewalk. This wouldn't even come out as far as that, it would just come out 18 feet and it would still leave 9.25 feet to the sidewalk. So it would still be in farther than the other side, but it would just, you know, come out enough to get the expansion of the waiting room and the reception area. There's no neighbor to the other side, it's us with the parking lot. So that's what we're asking for, it's not a big project, but we do need a variance. Any questions?
Just so it's understood, Sid, this vote is, this vote is for the council to send this to Planning and Zoning for their consideration. Once they take action, they will send it back to us for final review. Okay, any questions for Beth? While she's here.
She'll have to give the presentation again.
I'll do it again, I love coming.
All right. motions on the floor, and seconded, the recommendation to send this to the Planning and Zoning Committee, which is a zoning variance request by the Whiteside County Community Health. Any further questions or considerations?
I would like to say that I appreciate all that the county health department's done down on West Second Street to cooperate in solving everything from expansions to parking problems, and I appreciate their help.
Thank you.
I'm also going to read these up here. The state did an economic impact on the community, and this is for our clinic in Rock Falls. I don't know how much money the clinic brings into Rock Falls, so I made some copies. You guys want to take them off, okay? Thank you.
There's no further discussion, motion's been made, and seconded, it's on the floor, the recommendation to send this to the Planning and Zoning. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye. Second item is approval of resolution 2016-742, releasing the lien for the SOFOR grant recapture agreement for 805 Sixth Avenue.
I move that the release be granted.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Snow for the approval of resolution 2016-742, which is releasing the lien for the SOFOR grant recapture agreement for the property at 805 Sixth Avenue. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye. Also, on your desk, I left just a couple notes from the conference I attended in Omaha, Nebraska. I'd like to look those up. I have nothing else, though.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, how nice of you to be present again on Mr. Reese's behalf.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything you'd like to show us?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Ferkenstein, I have to look for you, people are, or maybe it was only Mark that had to change his position. Department heads, Mr. Cox, if you would please introduce our guest this evening that's going to talk to the issue.
Actually, I just have a couple things first, an update on West Forest. The lining project has been completed. They've replaced 10 feet of the forest main from the dog pound, has been replaced. They've lined the manholes and also the part of the line that collapsed between the two manholes has been lined, and I expect it to be blacktopped within two weeks. So we should be all cleaned up on that area in two weeks. The second is, it's a change order request from Leander for the main lift to replace the wet well gate valves with new plug valves, not to exceed $52,543.79. And for the presentation, I would like to turn that over to Larry Thomas of Stanley Consultants.
Motion on the floor first, please.
So moved.
Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Reitzel. Thank you. Larry, please.
Good evening, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry I have to be here to talk to you about any additional process or project, but last week when we were starting to disassemble the pumps, that we installed new pumps, we found that the valvings on those pumps don't operate. And I'd like to just take a moment to explain to you a little bit so you can visualize what we're dealing with here. This is looking down on the pump station, and the wet well and the drive-in where the pumps are. The pumps, there's four pumps downstairs. This is the lower level, we have three levels, this is the lowest level, so there's three pumps and water, and these pumps are connected to the wet well. Okay? And water enters that wet well from two different directions. The main line comes in from the north into the wet well. There's a secondary line that comes in from the east, and then the discharge from the pumps down to the west wall, and then goes over a mile all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. So basically, just to keep it very simple, water comes into the wet well and it fills up with water. Our pumps, they have a motor on, and the pumping unit, and then coming out of there, there is the valve. Okay? So what's going on is the water in the wet well is drawn into the pump and then discharged out of this discharge pipe. So it's this valve down here on the bottom that failed. And so the valve, and it's on all four pumps, and these pumps, these valves can't be closed. Now, a year ago, they were working, but now they're not. We don't know why they're not, but they're just simply not. The ones that are there right now are gate valves. On the television screen, you can see that's a drawing of a gate valve. It's literally a gate that comes down and cuts through the flow, and a hand wheel with a screw on it controls that gate going up and down. Problem is the gate doesn't appear to be able to go all the way down, so the flow can come underneath the gate. We'll be replacing it with plug valves, which is a 90-degree turn valve, and so basically it's got a plug in it, and when it's turned, it has a channel cut through that plug, it can turn so it's open, water can flow through the body of the valve. When it's turned 90 degrees, that shuts off the flow. So it's not a matter of a gate having to come up and down, it's a matter of just turning 90 degrees to shut off the flow. So this valve then, this is the one that we're talking about having replaced. Okay? Now, to do that, it's not that easy because this is full of water, and if we try to take that valve out, our drive-in fills up with water. And we can't pump around the wet well because there's no means to do that right now, and to do so would be, have a lot of risk associated with it, cost a lot of money because of the pumping that's required. So basically, we've got our pump, and the pipe going out, and they're going through the wall, uses the wet well, and right now we've got this valve, this valve we have to replace. So what we're going to do to make this work is we have to have a line stop, call a line stop, that's a temporary valve, they cut, basically they put a sleeve on the pipe, and with a T-I and a valve, and they drill through the pipe, and they insert a stopper in here, and it shuts off the pipe temporarily. Then when they're done, they'll withdraw this stopper, put the top back on the T end and close off again. So this is a temporary valve so that we can take this valve off and replace it with a new valve without the contents of the wet well coming in. So we, there's three major components with the change order. First component is the installation of these line stops, which is about $18,000. Put those in, put four of them in, okay? The second is for new valves, another 18 grand for the new valves. And then there's a contingency valve, and they're about $10,000, that the city wanted to have a, and not to exceed value of this, but because when we started putting in the pipe, the contractor was hesitant to handle not to exceed value on that, so he asked that there be a contingency valve, and so they added that $50,000. We don't believe or need to use that additional money, but in case, when we open up this pipe and we find some things that we have to deal with, we'll still be able to keep proceeding. So this is the long and the short of what we have to get done and keep this project moving, because we can't move forward without doing this work. Does anybody have any questions?
Why are we seeing failures like this on a three-year-old piece of equipment? I would assume that we should expect longer than a three-year life out of the valve and the associated pipe.
I am going to argue with you. I don't know why they failed this, but they should not have failed this. The type of valve that was used, a gate valve, is not typically used, typically used one valve, that's why I was wishing to date one at this point, but I can't tell you why these particular valves failed this.
Are we getting the valves from the same company that provided the first ones?
No.
And do we have any recourse to get warranty or anything from the original company on those valves?
No, they're out of warranty, the warranty period, the warranty period has expired on this pump station, so it doesn't seem right that we should have replacements at this point. And once we pull them out, we're not going to throw them away, we're going to keep them so that we can examine them and try to determine why they failed. And perhaps we go back, we can identify something particular to the man-fected valve, maybe we can go back and see if we can work out some kind of compensation.
Larry, because this was anticipated, these valves, the new valves we want to put in, is there a turnaround, because we've had, I know, quite a lead in time with the submersible pumps that we're replacing, is there as equal of a turnaround time on getting these new valves in?
No, the valves are not as bad as the pumps were, but this will be about six weeks for the valves to be able to get them delivered. So the contractor is requesting additional time, this timeframe, should I, on the board?
He went three to four weeks.
Here goes. He's going to try and make that time up by keeping the other things rolling while he's doing this work, but he's anticipating he may lose some time because of the borderline on those valves coming in. They're going to start doing the line stopping work immediately so that they can take everything, continue to take things apart, and then when the valves come in and they'll, then they'll be able to insert the valves, the rest of the work will be done. So that's why they didn't make up some of that time because they might stop, the line stop would hold back the floor a little tighter, so they can work with, just relying on this line stop holding back the flow.
Larry, I'm no expert, I mean, but it seems like that line stop is a pretty good idea to have in there. Wouldn't it be, I mean, would it?
Well, you end up with two valves, and line stops are temporary valves, they're built to be temporary, they're not built to have longevity, they're built to have the job done before. Now, you will still have this sleeve on here with the can, so if you ever had to go back to that line stop, that can, you wouldn't have to go, you wouldn't have to go holes like a second time, you'd use that same hole and shuffle and use line stop now. So you would have less work involved with going back with the can, if you should have to. Well, you don't have to do that anymore. The intent is, I mean, these valves are put here for a specific purpose, to be able to take them apart without the water coming in, and that's why they're driven, they have to hold, they can't be.
Other questions from members of the council?
What other problems could we expect to see? Talk about a contingency or not knowing, I mean.
If they found, for example, that they, the portion of the pipe was heavily corroded, I mean, you're asking, possible, and then they had to replace the pipe, and then we would experience some problems with that, so we have to, we have to do some additional work there if we have some problems with that. If we had some problems with existing plants and matching them up with the valve, for some reasons or other, primarily corrode, or perhaps if the existing, or something wrong with existing plant, if it's warped or whatever, that would be something that we have to do. So there's some smaller things that can interfere with the smooth, put it back together, like hooking up the plumbing under there, sink it, and get it all done, and pump it up and all sorts of things. So.
Do we?
It's that kind of thing. You're the one with the dripping sink, and you want us to trust you on the pumping station? Oh, I'm smart enough to hire someone. I'm working from experience, I have so many technical.
Do we have any fear or possibility of a major catastrophe happening while we're waiting for this equipment to get in?
Whilst we are waiting for that new equipment to come in, the pump station will still have its capacity, so we're not taking pumps offline, and in terms of the four or three, we will always have three pumps around, okay, available, so we're not, we're not removing the pumping capacity from the pump station. One of the reasons why we didn't want to try pumping, we considered pumping around the station, basically catching the flows, catching the flows outside here and here, and catching these flows and taking them around the exterior pumps. And we considered that, but that has a high potential of risk, and we didn't have it for a while, we're doing a temporary pumping, now we'll have a hellbreak loose, because it's unlikely we'd have enough pumping capacity to handle this situation.
Yeah, we've had enough hellbreak loose down.
Yeah. Other questions from members of the council?
This new valve is similar to like a ball valve?
Uh, yeah, it is similar, it's a, a ball valve, it's a valve, it sits on a body like that, but it's a sphere, and it has a hole drilled through it, like a core in apple, and when you have that hole lined up with the pipe, the water can flow, and you turn it 90 degrees and it can. The plug valve is very much like that, except it's, the body is rectangular instead of round.
Questions? Larry, thank you so very, very much for taking the time to come up and explain this. I think it gave some insight, as opposed to just talking about the valve and whatnot, gave some insight into the issues that we're dealing with and how they come along.
As an addition, just to let the alderman know, the language that is on this change order has been revised from the original language that the contractor wanted, and it's been negotiated and improved through the, the lawyers have all looked at it, just so you know.
So there's a motion been made, and it's been seconded, we've heard the presentation, we've had an opportunity to discuss it. If there's no further discussion or questions, this time, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you, everybody. Certainly, sir, please.
Just so you're aware, we do have a crew that's in Rock Falls this week doing the inspection of the panel, this is probably a C-MON program that you approved earlier in the year, so that is underway, and they are doing the inspection this week.
Thank you, sir. Yep. Mr. Sanders?
I have a question.
Chief Nelson?
Good night, ma'am.
Chief Cook?
Good evening, ma'am.
Mr. Serry?
Oh, my God.
Mr. Fidella?
Aye, Tony, my government.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Well, hopefully everyone knows, the last weekend of June, we're going to have three events along the Rock Falls Riverfront, Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest, Summer Splash, and River Chase. Since we do all know that, we do have an addition to Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest. I don't know if anyone or all of you have heard, Majeski Motors is offering a $31,000 truck to anyone who beats, and I want to get this, there's the language correct, just in case. You must be officially registered and qualified contestant for Bass Pro Shops Big Cat Quest in Rock Falls, Illinois to be eligible. Now, this is, you need to beat the current Illinois Department of Natural Resources Illinois State Record for Catfish Caught by Hook and Line and set the new record during the tournament. You're responsible for all equitable taxes and fees. In order to qualify for prize reimbursement, an eligible contestant, like I said, must beat the current record, and it's the newest. So if there are, someone who that day beats the record for a catfish caught by hook and line, 20 minutes later, someone else beats it again, it's the person who last set the record that gets it. Now, this is going to be, I mean, Majeski Motors wants you to win, so this can be flathead, channel, or blue catfish. They don't mind. Now, this is current or former employees, family members, agents, successors or signs of Majeski Motors or Rock Falls Tourism shall be ineligible to participate in winning the truck. I'm kind of bummed about that, but. And also, what's going on, there's, we have the hotels that are offering the great deals. Most of the room blocks have expired, but several of the hotels are still offering the low rate, you just have to call in and ask. And then we have dining and entertainment deals, drink specials, dining specials, live music during that three-day weekend. We have, on the tourism site, downloadable coupons for you to use. And I talked with several of the businesses, they said if you have a smartphone and you have the coupons up and show them, they'll honor that as well. And then I received from Bethany today information about the Wild Game Cookout with the alligator brats, beer brats, hot dogs, buffalo burgers, elk burgers, and pork chops, and they're adding grilled vegetables. And the River Chase is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday is test and tune, and the races are on Saturday and Sunday. And if anyone from outside the area doesn't know where the River Chase is, all they have to do is follow the noise. And the River Chase is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday is test and tune, and the races are on Saturday and Sunday. And if anyone from outside the area doesn't know where the River Chase is, all I have to do is follow the noise.
Any questions for Janelle? I dare you. Janelle, thank you for all your work you've done on this and coordinating with the other entities that are involved in this. Hopefully, the weather will hold up and we'll have a wonderful two days. Saturday night for the fireworks will be wonderful over the river and the bridge, and it'll be a pretty nice day. So, thank you for your diligence and hard work.
Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, Diane? Mr. Reitzel?
Couple things. First one, the city cleanup last Saturday. Then the landlord association was in the city, was very, very good. Took a TV over there, and good heavens, there was a mountain of TVs. I never saw so much paint in my life. I understood they were mixing it all up, and whatever car came out, that's what the car of Rod's house is going to be. Also, I'd like to thank Rock Falls Police Chief and her department for the very successful safe passing program. And with citizens, thank you and appreciate your concern for that problem. The results are very promising for what you've done. We appreciate it very much.
Mr. Logan?
Just to thank you to Chief Nelson and her department, as Dale said, for the safe passages and for the fine reports that we're starting to get every council. And the information's been very good, very helpful. Thank you very much.
For two, Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Snow?
Yeah, I just would like to talk about our canal for a minute. Usually, I observed it from the upper side riding my bike, and a couple of weekends ago, I got to observe it from the water side. I went out with Dave Druin from Dave's Outdoor World kayaking and went about ten miles. And what a wonderful view from the riverside. I liked it so much, I went out and bought a kayak, and it's my new sport now. But if you haven't had a chance to do that, I would recommend it because it's a nice, calm body of water, and you can kind of go at your own pace, and it's a lot of nature out there to observe, but... No, no motor on it, Dale. It's the arms. That's all I wanted to say is just what a great resource we have there, especially from that side. Now, I've got both views of it, so that's it.
Very good. Thank you. For three, Mr. Shuneman?
I just wanted to congratulate the Sterling Girls softball team. They were behind when I came in tonight at six o'clock. They were behind five to four with going into the top of the seventh. They were at bat. So, I haven't heard anyone here how that turned out. Anyway, congratulations to them. Whatever happens on a spectacular season.
Mr. Kleckler?
Yes, I guess I picked some of the top hits of comments that I've ever received from people throughout the city, and I'm sure that there's probably some of you that would, uh...didn't receive any of these, but they probably didn't call all the aldermen. I had one lady tell me, she says, "Have you seen these ads on TV about name a star after you?" She says, "Well, Rock Falls should have a name a pothole after you because Rock Falls has more potholes than there are stars in the sky." Another one said, when we talked about the Spring Fling fireworks, she says, "Will these fireworks be on TV, Channel Five?" And I asked why, and she said, "Because my road is so bad, I can't get out of my driveway with my car, so I need to watch it on TV." And then just recently, a gentleman told me, he said, "You know, spending these millions on the riverfront improvements is like buying filet mignon steaks with food stamps. It just isn't right." That's it.
Thank you.
And the purpose of all of that was what? I must have missed something.
Oh, did you? I was trying to help you get informed that there's some people out there that aren't happy with the way things are going in Rock Falls.
All right, John. Mr. Folsom?
Nothing there.
Mr. Ebenezer?
Thank you.
Under Mayor's report, have an item for council consideration. This will be for the approval of Resolution 2016-743, authorizing Robert W. Baird and Company of Milwaukee, Wisconsin to serve as an underwriter for a bond issue in the amount of two million dollars as an alternate revenue source, general obligation bond issue, and to include that Robert W. Baird and Company be directed to engage Chapman and Tuller of Chicago, Illinois as bond counsel in this action to produce documents and submit financing calculations and costs for a proposed bond issue for review and action by the city council. Before I call for a motion on that, I'd just like to say that this vote, we'll take a majority vote of the council, means that at least five members have to vote for it. And the other action, or the other item that I would just like to bring forth is that this is not authorizing the sale of the bonds. It is not action to purchase the bonds or go out for the bonds right now. This is just for the gathering of information to be brought back like we do for all of our bonding issues here for the consideration of the council. And in fact, if you choose to do this, we would have, and Mr. Sanders, help me if I'm incorrect, we would get the information back at the June 21st meeting. We would have an adopting order for the alternate bonds to be supported by TIP and Hotel Tax. That's what we choose to do. If that action is approved, June 23rd, there becomes a publication, which is required by law for thirty-day notice to the public on what we are doing here. And then on July 19th, there would be a bond issuance referred to as being in hearing. You have people in the community that are against this or think we're not doing what we should be doing to come forward and speak to the council about that action. And then there's a first reading and a second reading of such. So, the action that I am proposing this evening, the Resolution 2016-743, is simply to start things in motion for the council to get the figures, the facts, the dollar amounts, and what can be supported and what the cost to support that bond issue would be. So, the chair would entertain a motion if someone still wants to...
I'll move for the approval of Resolution 2016-743.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Kuhlmeier and seconded by Mr. Snow. The floor is now will continue discussion. Yes, sir.
I will just continue to state the same as what we had two weeks ago, that I think we should be holding off until we know what the assessment of the hotel is and what the actual finances or taxes that are generated from there going into the TIP district. To be as sure as we can that the bond can be paid off in that seventeen and a half years. I think if we think back in recent times, there have been a number of problems where we assumed everything was a hundred percent go. We had the Ozlet grant from the state of Illinois where we decided that we had to go ahead at that time, and I believe we committed something in the area of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get going on that and then only to have that grant delayed or whatever. So, as strong as we think things are, I think we really need to be, if we can say a hundred and ten percent sure that it's going to cover everything. And I don't believe that there would be any harm in any of the projects if we waited until we knew what that would be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments?
Your Honor, I'd like to ask Alderman Kleckler for a clarification. The last finance meeting was held one hour before the last council meeting. Two members were present. You were one of them, and you voted at that point to bring this issue forward. You were in favor of it then. Less than an hour later, you were opposed to it. Can you explain what the flip-flop was all about?
Yes, I just thought I would come forward out of committee to allow the council to make an informed decision on what to do rather than having it come with a non-recommendation from the...it would have come to council whether the finance committee recommended it or not. So, there was immaterial on what the vote was in finance.
Let me point out that the way our committees work is to make recommendations, and then the council acts on those recommendations. I was at that finance meeting, and you, sir, did not make any objections at that point while you were in finance. I mean, if you had said, "I object to these things, but I'll let it go forward," that's one thing, but you didn't. You voted to send these things to the council, and then you voted against it. And I think that's pretty disingenuous on your part. If you want to be against something or for something, be for or against something, but don't pretend to be for something and then bring it to the council. I think that's disingenuous. I think it does a disservice to the citizens of Rock Falls when you do that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's the impression that I gave you. That was not my intention.
Any other? Here now, motions on the floor. It's been seconded for the resolution. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Rescues, please.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Ebenezer?
Yes.
Six aye.
Gentlemen, the next item on the mayor's report requests the council give the approval to the appointment of Alderman Glenn Kuhlmeier to serve in the capacity of Mayor of Rock Falls for the period of June 11th, 2016, through June 18th of 2016. I will be attending the American Public Power Conference with Mr. Simon, and then will be staying behind for a couple of days to visit with my son.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made, second. I've talked to you, Glenn, but just verbally, you will accept that, I'm sure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item I have on there is Recon Report. Just very briefly, some of you have stopped by and asked, Robin and I, attendance at Recon out in Las Vegas, I think was very fruitful. Did we come back with all kinds of retail and commercial people, right? Throw shovels in the ground, dig? No. But we had an opportunity to get the city of Rock Falls out there, not only in her and I, but Retail Attractions, which is our economic group, had a lot of meetings that we weren't even part of in dealing with various development groups and stuff like that and promoting the city of Rock Falls. Our job was to walk the walk and go through the hallways, meet the various, and there were, name a company that was probably there, and introduce ourselves, ask questions about their firm, give them our cards, get cards from them, especially for the Illinois reps. And then our Retail Attractions group will take a list that we have already prepared to send to them, and then they will make contact with these businesses in a vigorous picture with mapping and analytics and demographics and everything else. And if we can get on the radar of some people, they will set up appointments and further commitments with them. So, it was a very hectic two days. As part of our agreement with Retail Attractions, one of the things that was in the proposal that they do is they put on a program that's called Retail 101 Class. And it's an opportunity for them, in this particular case, it's going to be one of their developers, Mr. Adam Chandler, will be coming out. That has been set aside for Thursday, June 30th. And I apologize, but it's eight AM to 12 noon. It'll be a four-hour program with about a fifteen-minute break in between. And they will cover all aspects of retail development, what we should be looking for, how they're going to be looking for it, things that we can do to better represent ourselves, et cetera. I've sent out emails to everybody today and asked if you can make it or part of it or whatever, please let me know that so we know the final numbers. We set out forty-two invitations. So, to our banking friends, to the council members, to our department heads, and to other people in the community that have a lot of investment in the city. So, let us know. And again, eight to noon, and that will be at the Harvest Time Church on Dixon Avenue because all of the other city facilities are taking that day for events, and we want to make sure to have a place. I would just like to mention, as several people did to Mr. Kleckler, that the landlords' cleanup group was greatly appreciated. I was very surprised, I don't know if you were, the number of TVs, I'm sure, but the other activities, I mean, Mr. Simmons did kind of lead on this and did an outstanding job, and we thank you very much, Sharon, your group and all the people that worked on it. I know that what TVs took two hours to pace to get rid of everything. How many did you end up with?
I don't have those figures. Sharon and I assume will be here in our next meeting to give an update of what was collected.
But there was a lot of TVs there.
Yes.
Absolutely. Under another item, just as a matter of information, we're always, always happy to get new businesses into the community, large or small, and very happy to say that this past weekend, the Touch of Tie Two Restaurant that we have heard about for three years, as long as we heard about the bar that it's in, has finally opened its doors. It's doing very well, and we welcome them to the community. And it was a very busy weekend up there, and I think that they'll do a great job and add to the downtown, excuse me, the uptown business community. I have nothing else that I can think of. We have no executive session actually for this evening. Are we forgetting anything, Mr. Sanders?
Not that I'm aware of, Your Honor.
I move for adjournment.
So, it didn't look like... Motion by Mr. Folsom, seconded by Mr. Reitzel for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand here and thank you.